I'm happy to hear that. Where did you read that?
Uh, in the New York Times this morning. I'll send you the article.
I call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. This is a regular meeting. Today's January 24th, 2019, 7:02 PM at the MLD Elementary School Library. I'll start off with a roll call. Commander?
That's-
David Tanner.
Marty Kane.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
Rich Canong?
Yes.
We have approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have approval of the minutes for January 10th, 2019. We have space for citizens comment. We have old business, Ledgewood Meadows subdivision. And then we have land use ordinance revisions. Revision to land use ordinance section 933, performance standards for age restricted housing. Item two is a discussion of potential amendments to cluster housing. Item three is a discussion of revision to proposed food truck performance standards. And then we will have other business, if the board has any. I need a motion to accept the agenda unless you have changes that you think we should make.
Motion to accept this, ready?
Yeah.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. We will proceed on the minutes of January 10th. Do we have all of those sent to us?
When I put a copy in.
Oh, I have. I just, I printed them all off. Is there anything that anybody sees that needs to be corrected or adjusted?
Not I.
Take this opportunity to thank Corinne for having me print out 15 pages worth of documents.
You said that they had modded the findings of fact after the incident, right?
Yes. Oh, yeah. No, I know they do.
Do nothing about it.
I opened it up. I looked at it and went, oh my goodness. And we got it twice.
Twice?
Yeah, we did, uh-
Or two.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, since that's why I'm not so-
Yeah, you're using the whole range.
I need a motion to accept the minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes from January 10th, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in fatal.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
No abstention.
As with one abstention. Citizen comment. Anything that the citizens, all three of you, would like to comment on that is not on the agenda for discussion. We will move into old business. Item number one of old business, Ledgewood Meadows subdivision. An expiration of the subdivision approval. Determination that Ledgewood Meadows subdivision located at 14 Ledge Cliff Drive tax map for lot 24 and 25B in the AR District has failed to substantially complete all approved, all approved improvements within the time period specified by the major subdivision permit and section 83F of the Arundel subdivision regulations. Under section 83F, the board shall notify the York County Registry of Deeds that the Ledgewood Meadows subdivision is null and void and shall be removed from the county deed and map references. Philip Labby is the owner and permit holder. Mr. Labby got an extension from us. He originally came in 2015- and was approved for his permit. And in December of 2016, he requested a one-year extension, which we granted. 16, 17, 2017, sorry.
16 is the original approval, so you request for extension.
Yes.
December of 14th.
On December 14th of 2017, which we granted. That extension has since expired. Our options, according to the land use ordinance, we need to have a vote to notify the York County Registry of Deeds that that subdivision permit is null and void and needs to be taken out of the county deed and register.
Our options?
That's a good question because there's nothing in the ordinance other than when the, if the permit expires, we have to tell the York County Registry.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir.
It is not substanti- substantially completed, but I believe it's substantially begun. I contracted with a tree cutter in October, my regular guy that we use. He was gonna go the end of October, then he backed out because he picked up a job that was three months long. I hooked up with another tree cutter that said he could move in there the last week of October, which he did. He never started cutting for two weeks. By the middle of November, all the trees were cut and gone off-site. By the end of November, almost all of the stumps were grabbed and stored, waiting to have access to get to them, to remove them. And by the middle or end of December, we had probably 80% of the site subgraded. We hooked up with four different ledge contractors. One of them backed out. Two of them have given us quotes. One of them was supposed to give you a quote, and he hasn't, so he's probably gonna be out. And we are ready, the ledge is all cleaned off. We're ready to begin the blasting process. And it doesn't look like we've done much because the first 200 feet from Route 111 and I haven't touched. I've left it natural until we get ready to go out there. We're using the existing driveway that services that mobile home right now. And my blasters are ready to go. Makes sense that when I got a call from that, I called the blaster and told him, "Do not go till after this meeting." So I believe that I have substantially started, but not completed.
Right. And that, to me, that would be the issue. The ordinance says that it's been substantially completed.
I think there's a line on another page that indicates it could be different.
Uh, that was eight.
I didn't know I did this when I did this.
Marty's got it right there. It's 83F. Section, if you've got your ordinance with you, it's 83F.
83F.
Subdivision, that's right.
Subdivision, on one.
It's right there.
I put it out.
Yeah.
Except in the case of a phased unit development plan. Failure to complete substantial construction of the subdivision within two years of the date of the approval of the plan shall render the plan null and void. And to me, that seems to be the issue. Now, if there's, if there's something in here that says otherwise, I'm more than willing to listen to. I just don't know where it is.
How much do you think you've spent so far?
Dollar-wise, I've spent, including engineering, I've probably spent close to $75,000.
Okay, so including engineering, but does that include everything else? Does it include surveying? Does it include legal? Does it include permitting, moving costs? You include all the costs associated with this. How much do you think you've spent?
Yeah, I'm gonna say with, with the surveying and what we've paid the engineer and what my company has done. So to date, I'm gonna say 75, maybe 80,000.
How about the tree cutter?
The tree cutter, uh, he cut full wood. I didn't have to pay him any money. He goes to pay him all the nice wood in there.
Well-
And he made money.
But that has a value.
That has a value.
Right.
What's the value of that?
That's the value of that would probably be five, eight thousand.
Did you include that within the 75, or is that a add-on?
No, I did not.
So we're up into the 80s?
Yeah.
And? Plus permitting?
I think that that is-
You got that included? What's the project projected to cost? Is that, is that part of the submission that's had?
No.
I think, I think the projected cost is around 250.
So you spent a third.
Close to a third?
Pretty close.
Are these documentable costs?
Most of them are. The, uh... Yeah, I could document all of it. I was hesitating with my equipment because I go there personally on Saturday and Sunday. And I work all day and I don't do a recorded flip. But I know what I did when I did it. And I've had a couple of people in. But during the week, my customers are priority. Take care of my customers and I go to that project when my customers are all being taken care of in between.
So you, you said in your opening remarks that it's not substantially completed, but you directed us to think about it being substantially begun.
Correct.
By, by, in your remarks, do you intend to suggest that you are considering substantial completion to be at least half-done, like over the 50% mark?
Well, I have had several inquiries on lots. And I have told my folks that have asked about a lot. They couldn't build. They couldn't get a permit. But my intent is to pave it based on in the spring of 2019.
Okay. Can you really answer my question though? My question is, when you made your remarks, and you said you didn't think it was substantially completed, but it's substantially begun, my question is, in saying that, is your, is your thinking that you needed to get at least half the project done to be considered substantial completion?
No, I didn't think that way. I thought that if I've got a good start on it and I'm working on it regularly, that I consider that substantially begun.
Anybody else have any questions?
And I didn't read the ordinance carefully enough to say that it required to be substantially completed. My error there.
So in the section that you thought you read that may have given us some gray area, do you remember any key words or phrases?
It said something about substantially, uh-
Begun?
Begun, yeah.
Okay, 'cause-
Is what I thought I read. I may have misinterpreted it, but-
Okay, can I look at it from Mel's direction?
Oh, yeah.
I'm wondering what would be the consequences of, of, uh, rendering it null and void, would you could just reapply? I'm wondering what-
But the consequences of rendering it null and void, I mean, he cannot reapply. This is a residential subdivision.
Okay.
That was, that was approved before he changed it to a- It's now in the, in the ARD District that he couldn't have a residential subdivision.
So do we have to decide this tonight? Can we find out what our options are before we decide to report it to the, you know, York County Office of Deeds?
Well, in fairness to Phil, I think the ordinance, I personally think the ordinance is pretty clear. This is three years down the road, and work did not get started until, until snowfall this year, essentially. And it was a long period of time, including an extension that was given that, and, and nothing has, nothing was done up to that point. The ordinance does not address what our options are. It says you shall notify the Registry of Deeds. To me, that's a pretty clear language. So I'm not sure how to go about handling that.
So is there a G-TAD in there that is-
Well, I could give a little perspective. I can give a little perspective. And the perspective is that you recall Phil spent that year trying to find an alternative way to do it, to lessen the impact of the area by doing a single road for two projects rather than one. And I would say he spent most of that time trying to do that.
Working on that other road.
Yeah, working on the other road, which turned out not to be financially feasible. Or, and Fitzgerald's, I guess, pulled out of that.
Fitzpatrick.
Fitzpatrick, I'm sorry, yeah. So most of that time is spent trying to do a different design, and I think he spent a lot of money doing that.
He did.
And did you include that money in the estimates you just told us?
No.
I think he should.
What kind of money was that?
We spent about, uh, close to $15,000 on engineering.
So-
And it turned out to not be feasible to go that route.
How long would it take you to pull together documentation of the expenses that you discussed with us tonight? And not a, not a half-baked job at it, but to really put that together for the-
From looking by the next meeting.
I would have to ask, to what end would we be looking at?
I think to the end that if there is, if there is substantial documented evidence that there is a level of construction into the project that meets the definition of complete substantial construction, which is-
But it's not, it's not substantial construction. The ordinance says substantial completion.
Well, does the, does the ordinance define that?
It does say construction.
It says construction.
I mean, I'm looking-
It says complete, complete substantial construction of the subdivision.
Well, that's defined in the definitions, on page three of definitions within the subdivision ordinance. And it's talking about 30%.
So he's already at 33 and a third.
Oh, yeah. But that's, that's just rough estimates. And that's why I'm asking, if you can document that to the board and that-
Yeah.
So that goes to Susan's question, that do we, do we, do we-
No, and I would, I would agree with that. I did not realize that complete substantial construction was 30%.
I think that we'd have to make the right decision on this, Phil, because, you know, you come to us like any other citizen of the town that you're also select on too. And we've gotta be, we're gonna do this right. But if you've, if you've got these costs that you've talked to us about tonight, and you can document them, then I think we can do the right thing by, uh-
Granting another extension.
Make, well, no, let's-
Either that or-
Phil says he can have it by the next meeting. Make a motion-
To defer.
To, to table this to the next, to the next meeting, which is the 14th of February. And bring us in all of the information to show that here, I've done 30% of the work, or more than 30% of the work. Because that then meets what the, the ordinance says.
Well, if I, if I told my blaster tomorrow that he could stop, he would be in there Monday morning, and he told me that in three weeks, he would have that all blasted, and that's upwards of a hundred thousand.
But I think the issue right now is whether or not there's an, there's an actual permit available.
If you table this-
So does he have the week if it's tabled?
I will have another hundred thousand dollars spent on that.
I'm saying that I don't think that that's appropriate because, because now-
That's an extension.
That's an extension, which we're definitely putting over. We need to know where you stand right now in terms of what you're doing.
Without those, without those blasters.
That's who we stand right now.
But can't, don't, do you think in part of his doing his due diligence to get this project off the ground, the fact that he explored the single road option as opposed to the one he ended up with, doesn't that, don't you think it could legitimately be folded into his costs?
That shoot up eight months.
I think so.
Right. But if that's $15,000 worth of engineering added on top of what you've done, it means that Rich can legitimately say-
He still has to document this is what I spent.
Right. He can legitimately say if you spent 30, more than 30%, and are substantially complete on construction.
And that's, and that's what I'm saying. If you could, if you can document to us that you have spent more than 30, 30% of the cost of, of this subdivision, then the ordinance says, okay, you keep going because you've, you've met the complete substantial construction standard. Whether that was done on the, on the road that did not come up, or in the project that, that is underway right now, is irrelevant because they were, that was all part of the same project. It was just a different road going a different way. I'm concerned, and I don't want, I don't want to say, well, let this guy go do the blasting because that blasting, if you have not met the 30% rule, that blasting is gonna be useless to you. You, you have to show us that you've met the 30% standard.
Yeah, I think we're, we're talking about, you know, the situation today.
Right. As it, as it sits right now. So bring us in all of, bring us a reconciliation of the bills, even if it's a thing that says, you know, this is what it cost me, just like a handwritten document.
And do your timesheets.
And solid as you can.
For the time that you spent on weekends.
I can do that.
Okay.
The other, the other thing is, question.
Yeah, my-
Blasters are sometimes very hard to get along the way because of time constraints.
Mm-hmm.
As he mentioned before, there was four of them, okay? It's down to one who didn't bother, one doesn't want to bother, and possibly two others, if I'm reading you right, Phil.
Correct.
I mean, and more of a delay either way along the way, will he still be able to get the blaster? I, I'm just-
But that, that would not be an issue. If, if he has made the 30% completion, then it does- I don't want to say it doesn't matter if the blaster goes away, because it does matter. But if you've met the 30% completion without the blaster, then you're not bound under that two-year statute that the ordinance has in place. So it, it could continue on later, and he, and he could come back. Unless, I don't want to have the town plan to do more work because we have to make that decision as a board. So I'm gonna table this to the 14th of February, which is our next meeting. And if you could bring in the documentation to prove that, that you've done 30%.
Mr. Chairman?
The 14th of February is a whole-
Do you have?
Down town stay.
We need a motion to, do we need a motion to table stuff, anybody?
I think we should.
Okay.
I think we should.
Did somebody make a motion?
I'm, soon won't.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to table this to the 14th of February. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear for the record that the only way we can determine whether it's substantially complete is through the cost of the-
Of the cost of the project.
Yeah, so I think 30% of the cost, I think, would include engineering and, and whatever. So I, I think this is the best we can do. So I just wanted to say that for the record.
I think a long time ago, I gave to TAD, if I'm not mistaken, a estimated road project of 160,000.
161,000.
Yeah.
Nine hundred something.
So we'll go have that as being, the, the construction will be completed at that cost. That's the estimate. And then if whatever 30% is.
If we, if we used the 160,000 that I gave TAD in writing some time ago-
When you did it originally.
So $55,000 would get you, you're already over there.
Well, is that, is that the projected cost as proposed now, or is it?
I think it would have, based on your table.
Costs have gone up a little bit, and I've had a lot more engineering cost than I anticipated when I gave TAD that proposed cost. And my engineering practically doubled from what I anticipated then.
With that being said, we're gonna use the 169,000 because that's the number you gave us, and that's the number that the ordinance would reference back to be 30% complete as opposed to today's cost. Yeah, today's are gonna be higher, but it, the ordinance doesn't ask us about that.
You must be aware of that, TAD?
Yeah, I gotta pair your word with the other font.
But he still has, he still has to provide the data.
Fifty-five.
I'm sorry. I know it was on, I didn't bring the file. I know it's 160. I remember we did that.
But at your office, it's somewhere there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on that, on that basis, on that basis, if it's 161 instead of 2, 250, okay? He already has that.
He needs to provide the documentation. We have to have something that we can put in our hands. If somebody comes along and says, "You did it for Phil Labby. I want you to do it for me," and it's a completely different scenario. If we don't, if we can't say, here, we have the documentation provided by Phil to show that he meets the standards in the ordinance, that's the only, only reason we want it. You need to meet the standard for the ordinance, and then we go, okay, fine. And we can, and we can get you more. Okay? So, all those in favor of the motion to table to the 14th?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
It is unanimous.
Phil, can you get that before the 14th? I mean, that, I mean, that way holiday and everything else like you're saying, so that-
Yeah, that's two weeks.
Yeah, but I mean, uh-
It's actually three.
It's actually three weeks.
Twenty, yeah.
So you have a lower financial threshold to meet at $162,000. So just what you described tonight-
It's gonna be pretty easy to meet that.
It should be fairly easy for you to be able to do that.
Because if we use the 161 that I gave TAD-
You're looking at like less than $55,000.
Yeah, I'm more than halfway for that cost already.
Because the rest of this is gonna be blasting, grabbing, gonna be stonering.
So you're, you're there. All you need is the paperwork.
Phil, have you, have you supplied anything prior to asking us now? Anything for documentation to?
I have not supplied anything recently. I didn't think that we needed to have any town inspections for tree cutting and stump removal.
But we will need it for the rest of it.
And, and I removed the organic material. I'm now pretty much at subgrade, except for the blasting that we acquired were above subgrade.
So assuming that you, that you get your, your numbers to show that you're, you're more than 30%, then we're gonna have to come up with a deal on our expenses.
Yes, I think in here it says 2%. Yes, I think in here it says two percent for inspection.
Thank you much, Phil.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything to say about my project? Because these are my direct neighbors, the close neighbors I have.
Yeah, yeah, just something I can ask you out there.
Oh, okay. All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. All right.
Hey, Phil, call me, I'll call, talk to you next week.
That was a good catch.
Talk to you next week.
Yes.
Perfect.
Get together and call me.
Yeah, I'll come over and see you.
That's actually good to know.
So you know.
Yeah, it is a lot.
Okay, I'll call first.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
I've never heard of that.
Thirty percent being the standard. That's the most, good, good catch, yeah. Because it talks about ninety percent in other places.
I think we were, I think Jesus on your little folder is apropos tonight, what do you make?
I was thinking seventy-five.
Yeah, so that, otherwise it would have been a couple of problems. I, I don't want to shut it down, just to.
No, but the thing is, but what Rich is saying is everybody will say, oh, it's Phil Labby and he's a selectman and
Exactly, yeah.
he came to you and he didn't really conform to the rules, how come he gets a pass and we don't get a pass and.
If he can prove thirty percent.
Yeah, now the illness is on him.
And then I would like to recommend we revisit that issue at some point.
I totally agree because thirty percent is not.
Thirty percent's obscene.
It's see, obscenely low.
It's absurd, it's like saying.
Not really, that's a lot of sting, that's a fair amount of skin in the game. That's what, that's what the bank expects you to have for, for, you know, for equity in your home.
But then don't use the word substantially complete.
Substantial doesn't mean most. Those are different words.
And it doesn't even mean half.
Substantial means a lot.
Thirty percent is a lot.
I don't think thirty percent is a lot.
Really? If you, I think, I think a thirty percent tax rate is a lot.
Well, I agree with that.
Okay, well, in that context, yeah, it's a lot. Okay.
Yeah, and, and context is everything.
So should it be fifty-one percent? Half, uh, halfway completed at a percent?
I think we should.
Look, it's been working in, it's been working in the ordinance and we know that because it's never come up before today.
We've never had this issue.
Right.
But I guarantee you.
That's who we have. Huh? We have? We have? Oh, sure. Oh, yeah, we have. I don't remember that. I try to forget that.
Jimmy Jones, you had to vacate his subdivision, if you recall.
But that was, but that was at his request.
We would have done it anyways.
Yeah.
Because he didn't do the two year.
Hypothetical.
Paper?
A hypothetical.
It wasn't a, yeah, it wasn't a hypothetical because we did it. That wasn't hypothetical. He hadn't even started in two years. And started more than two years. And, and yes, he asked because he wanted to pay taxes already.
I think we legitimately tried to find a way for him to legally and legitimately, um, you know, continue.
Be compliant.
I was, I was, I was surprised that he didn't ask for another extension.
Could he?
We can't.
I don't, I don't think we can either.
Well, there doesn't seem to be any opening in this.
Doesn't say no, hey, it doesn't say no. It doesn't say yes, so it's, the door is open.
I think we can give so many extensions.
I don't think, well, we, the problem was, we gave an extension originally and show me where that said that we could do that.
Yeah, and I was thinking the same thing.
Well, let's not, let's not go there.
It is what it is right now. So let's move on to the land use ordinances, revisions to land use ordinance, section nine-three-three, a discussion of performance standards for proposed age-restricted housing and amending the multifamily housing accordingly.
Our problem is right now, and I didn't work, get much time, I ain't got no time this week to work on age-restricted housing. But it's a fibrous system, this age-restricted housing. Its roots go all over the place, under the sidewalk, around the sewer pipes and everything. The big question about, about this is, number one, where we have age-restricted housing right now is in the multifamily, multifamily performance standards in conditional uses. And you have a copy of that in front of you. And essentially you find it buried, and I mean literally buried in the text, where it talks about age-restricted housing. Does that call? I gave it all my. And. Yeah, well, I just gave them all out.
That's an extra.
Come on, me, plenty of. All right, okay, you got an extra, oh, I gave you one. All right, so you can see age-restricted density bonus in the occupation of units, in, in multifamily development is restricted to individuals aged fifty-five and older until maximum, um, the units may be, by a factor of two, which means double density. Now, we've used this before, if you recall. Well, we've used it once, but we also have in the DB one district. One of the things in the DB two districts, because what we wanted to do in there was, it said you could have age-restricted housing, you could get double density if you included as part of a business plan. And as part of PMUD or PUD or where you have a mixed-use development going in, then include it. Commercial and residential, certainly you could put age-restricted housing as part of that. And the question is, do we want to extend that outward from just the business districts? Probably don't, but.
Where is it allowed right now?
Age-restricted housing, it's anywhere. Right now, age-restricted housing is allowed anywhere where residential is allowed.
You just get twice, whatever that zone allows.
In double density, which, you know, is, should be a good incentive, especially in one-acre zones, you can get half-acre lots. It's, of course, not residential density, which means all the, you know, the pavement, the, you know, the wetlands have to be deleted and the unusable soils and the steep slopes, which we don't have a lot of here, have to be deleted. And then you make your density calculations. But, simple fact is that it's allowed everywhere. And.
In all districts?
All.
Or residential.
Any, any, any district that allows residential. And here, here lies, lies the rub. We have business districts, they're called VI, they're called the, you know, we have five business districts. And right now residential development's not permitted in them anymore.
And we have two mixed-use districts, two and three?
Yeah, we have two and three, which are basically residential districts with spatters of business in. That's what they really, that's what they really are. It's, it's the pickup states things. We, we have a town where residential's allowed and just, it was allowed everywhere, including in our quote-unquote business districts. And, and in our residential districts, you're allowed to have residential anywhere, but there was a scattering of different kinds of non-residential uses you could do, gravel pits, log yards, of course timber harvesting. They didn't call them contractor yards, we called them contractor yards, but they had service industries and service uses and a whole bunch of other things, different names, home occupations.
And this is in zones two and three?
This was in zones two and three, and R four as well. So it's R one, R two, R three, R four. We've gone through and seen, we don't have a lot in R one, non-residential uses. But certainly age-restricted would be allowed in the R one district. So right now they're allowed anywhere residential is, and in the B one, they're allowed as part of a business development. A, a mixed-use or a PUD land unit development, which has business as the primary use. And you could have residential as a secondary use. And primary and secondary are listed as fifty-one percent, yes, just so you know. Primary's fifty-one percent, secondary is less than fifty-one percent.
So we could make a Levittown.
Uh, you could have a Levittown, but you're gonna have to have more business than, than Levittown.
Right, Levittown is just, you know, it's a suburban sprawl, but.
No, Levittown was not. Levittown was built so that, so that Mr. Levitt would have a place to house his workers.
No, it was for all the returning soldiers. I grew up on Long Island. I remember.
I'm thinking of, of the Pullman Town.
Oh, because I grew up on the island, remember my dad apparently came back from World War Two. He bought on the island and they were building Levittown at the time. And I think a lot of soldiers bought in there, but, you know, I'm sure his workers too. But a quick question for you. So when I was trying to describe what they did in California and they built this combination of low-income, senior, and then mixed-use with businesses and a Whole Foods and this, that, and the other thing. It seems to make sense to me to allow residential development in certain business zones because they feed off of each other. People.
That's true.
Want to be able to access businesses for their goods and services and the goods and services need an audience. And those audiences are, are built in because you don't have to necessarily get in a car and drive ten minutes, fifteen minutes, or to get to where you need to go to get what you need. So maybe that should be rethought.
But it's already in, it's already in, uh, being one of the two districts, if you look at it. And you gentlemen, three of you here should remember that because we, we went through that unendingly. I think it was two thousand twelve we went through that, two thousand thirteen we went through that.
You just don't allow single family, is that what it is?
It, it has, it's, it's secondary to the property. The main, the main use of the property must be commercial.
Okay. Unless, and if you remember, this is, we're do, we're doing classic Jane Jacobs stuff, you know, life of the city. Rebuilding, you're looking at our down, I quote-unquote downtown area as a Jane Jacobs kind of city, where we had.
What downtown area?
Well, the area we designated as a downtown area.
Which, it won't get me going on that again because I told you it was useless.
Yeah, we don't really have a downtown part.
Nope, but what we're trying to look at is Route One as, well, that, that's, well, we wanted to call it the Village Center, but remember that name? Turned down several times. But we also have vertical stratification, which basically says in the D, in the B one, in DB one, if you recall, you can have residences and you just, they just have to be in the second floor of the business. So it's a classic, you know, the baker, you know, works on the first floor and he lives on the second floor.
Well, it's like that whole area where they have, in Kennebunk, where the Hannafords is, the nail salon, and the next one over is Ace Hardware and CBS. If had, it had been developed differently, you could have residential, you could have had low-income, senior and residential.
I don't know if you know, but there are, there are some residential development.
In the back, I've seen that, yeah. So that makes the most. It, that makes the most sense. It encourages.
That is allowed.
For their business.
It exists right now.
But that's Kennebunk.
But it, it exists here in.
It's existed in our ordinance right now.
Yeah, the ordinance allows you to do that.
Yeah.
Just nobody has chosen to do it yet.
To me, that's the, that's the direction we would hope people would go.
Well, one of the problems is that we still, we still allow exempted subdivisions to occur in those districts, which is actually in many ways deadly because people are picking danger. I didn't think they would, but they do. Exempted subdivisions are family divisions and, yes, I, I have one. I have two that they're going to be doing. You guys don't know about it because it's exempted. You don't look at it. I have to look at it. And, and I have a family that's dividing up a parcel of land. It's a prime piece of land for, for business. It's killing it. Uh, and, and I have another one that's, that's being done incrementally every five years. Well, it's actually been divided among children and they're gonna divide. So it's gonna be a logarithmic kind of thing going.
In a roundup?
In a roundup, yeah, on Route One. So prime business area is going to be chewed up by single-family homes because they want to live there.
Well, it's where they own land.
That's right. They own land, so they want to live there.
Right.
So family, family, families dividing up the land. Problem is that that's chewing up.
Do they, is there a, does it tax rate on business versus residential?
It's not that clean. It's, yeah, it's.
If you had a residence, it wouldn't be taxed.
If you had a residence in a business zone, you're not taxed at a different rate than you would be because it's based on comparables, you know? It's really based on comparables. It's not based on zones.
Yeah, great.
For instance, uh, and this has been, been really big complaints. If you're close down to Kennebunk port or you're close to the water, you don't have a tax rate any different than if you're up in the middle of Davis Farm Forest. You're, you're, the same standards are used to tax your property, so we don't base it on location.
We don't have a view tax?
Nope.
So in New Hampshire, if you have a view.
Yeah.
You pay, you pay dearly.
Yes.
To, on your taxes, even if you see a little, a little top of a mountain. Yeah, it's crazy. The difference.
But it, it more mimics real estate or actual real estate value in terms of saleable value. That kind of thing mimics that more because if you have a view, you, the people are gonna ask for a higher, higher price on their house. So New Hampshire mimics that more. Some towns in, in Maine or cities in Maine mimic that. They, they use that as well. We do not. That's not how we've been set up. If we do a revale at some point, we can start looking at, at, at neighborhood differences or view differences or locational differences if we want to, but so far it's been egalitarian. You got a house, it doesn't matter if it's, you know, right on the edge of Kennebunk or if it's, you know, out next to, uh,
Yeah, we have a view. We, we have a view. We got the railroad tracks.
So, um, can we also, are we gonna discuss the idea of half-acre lots?
My neighborhood.
It's, it's to build houses in addition to senior housing, correct? Isn't that one of the things under consideration?
What, senior housing?
To allow half-acre lots in R one?
Uh, yeah, and that's, that's the point. What this, we need to have an age-restricted, we probably need to, first of all, we need to take it on multifamily right now.
Take it out of there?
Yeah, take it out of there, make it separate.
Yeah.
That's why we put it as a cross-out. So you take it out of there and make it a separate thing because unless we use, when you want to say that age-restricted housing only can be multifamily.
I see. I, I was wondering why it was being proposed to be pulled out of there and you're saying it's basically causing a misreading of the availability of it.
Yeah.
And, and was the definition of multifamily, did they have to be attached?
They have to be attached.
Uh, we, we, how do we have?
The only one in town that was.
No, we got two. Oh, you got turner oaks, okay. That's fifty-five.
So it's misleading, that's why I want that.
Well, but then you also have old postro.
Free standing.
Let's try to graph it.
And that's not, that's individual.
And there's, there's, yeah, no multi-families there.
No.
And do breezeways count as a connection?
It's connected. It's, it's common walls.
Com- oh, common walls, okay. Just that, I guess.
No, attached housing. What it means is that you do not have an individual lot.
Right.
Now, that's not always true either because in condominium, even in attached housing with condominiums, you can have, you can have house of minions as a call. Which is basically they have, you have like a ten-foot, you have a ten-foot, uh, uh, strip of land that you own. In, in fact.
Right, like for a patio or something like that.
Well, yeah, but just to do gardening or whatever. In our cottage is all our house of minions. It's that same sort of thing. Technically, that's multifamily because they don't.
But isn't that more an easement? I mean, in the HOA, I was in for a period of time in California. It was, it was a house of minium, minium in the sense that you could build your patio and stuff like that. But the HOA still owned the land. That was, it was more, more like an easement than it was, you owned the land and your, your garden, your patio.
But you're taxed for that land.
I don't recall that.
We do.
Okay, but I mean, maybe we were, I just wasn't aware of it, but.
Well, what you were taxed was a portion, the valuation of the other amenities and the other land was pooled together and that value then was assigned to a portion, your portion. You had two hundred units and you would pay two-hundredths of that.
But you only, you know, the HOA I was a part of, you only owned the four walls that, essentially the four walls of your dwelling.
Now, I will tell you that I had one in Old Orchard Beach at Toadgrass, which was true house of minions. They actually owned that land. They actually owned that land, that little strip of land that was theirs. And it was an ownership issue. It was not a planning issue because it was in a P, it was in a planned unit development. So we reviewed it as a planned unit development, but the owners owned that little strip of land.
So how do you think we should reward this to make it clearer and more?
But make it simple. Let's not make it.
Oh, it's a, it's following a federal regulation. There's nothing simple about it.
So.
We should put in, we should put in, what I think we should, I think we, we need to, I think we need to open it up a little bit. But here's my concern, my concern. I think we need to open it up a little bit, but here's my concern, my concern is if we did single family hu- uh, housing dwell development, here's the concern that I've got. If we do all single family homes and they're on their own lots all the time. Then if somebody starts. Somebody starts breaking the rules and they bring kids in. They start having kids who are, who are being, uh, who are in our school system.
Are we talking about fifty five and older?
Yes, we are, it happens.
And isn't there, or isn't there a mixture of the buildings, like you can buy a freestanding cottage or you can buy a town home? Or you can buy, uh, you know, a building with multiple units in it depending upon how much you want to spend and.
Well, we haven't, we haven't, those existed, those exist in the world out there that hasn't existed here.
Okay.
And but the issue is if we take, if we have to decide whether we, well, let me just continue with my benefit thought. What happens, what can happen is that especially with single family, somebody decides to go bring a kid in, then the homeowners association says to them. Wait a minute, that's in violation and they have to go to court.
Yeah.
It depends on how there's it's written.
Yeah, it does.
Some of them are written in a deserved percentage of the.
Well, it's actually decided by who's got money this with C.
Did, did the judge have good copy that morning? That's a witness flag.
Yeah.
Well, that is, that does have an impact, but it's actually who has the resource, who wants to spend the resources to enforce the law?
So then the whole HOA falls apart.
It can fall apart, it's especially dangerous in small ones because then you have a limited pool of money. The people are kicking in to enforce a, basically a law. And our recourse, what's our recourse, what are we going to do, pull the permits?
Well, I, I have, uh, an, an issue with it, ever since we passed it and I've seen that the one developer that's on this route. I've gotten bad feelings about it and I think, um, maybe they're not the best role model to to.
You think?
To compare, uh, to.
You know the development he's talking about?
Um, but. What?
Oh, Paul Strode?
What, what I, you know, what Kevin wrote.
Yes, yes.
What I'd hate to see is this town becoming, if this area is already magnet for retirees with that with money. And and that's what seasonal cottages are made, they can't build them fast enough and they're, 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 they're selling for twice what they originally, uh, the business plan includes. So and and it's just a matter of time before there'll be huge developments of fifty five and older. And where, where is the soul of fin- of this, uh, of this town?
That's what Kennebunk Port is having issue with.
Kennebunk Port, Gunkport, there, there's like thirty kids in the Gunkport school system.
Yeah, same thing with.
And Kennebunk Port, where are they, less than two hundred now, K through, through twelve?
Twenty babies born in Kennebunk Port this year or something like that.
And we're right in that trend and this is the town that with land that they can do that, so I think, um. We're not in the, in the ten million dollar home range though. We're, we're in the, the.
Walmart.
The one luck avenue road that was selling, they're asking for four baby, so and it's, um, it's, it's a marketable price. But the cottages are selling for almost that much and they're seasonal now.
Two hundred, two, three hundred. They, they start at about two sixty nine.
But they're, they're, they're a seasonal cottage, you know, it's not even.
Well, we do get those, we've, we've got several that are four hundreds.
That have actually, it has to, I just think we have to watch out. You know, when we get together, comp plan, uh, members and they, and even at the last town meeting, they're saying, there's, this town, there's too many regulations, we're losing what we are. I think this one thing might help us to lose faster than anything else.
And you know, and you, you might have, I mean, that's an interesting point that Tom's making there because, um, that's true. I mean, I, I've lived through it myself in my, not my hometown, but the town next to me, and that's where I cut my teeth as a, as a, as a system. Yeah, I mean, it, it, it will change the dynamic, it can change the dynamic of the community, it can change the political, um, structure of the community, it certainly can change the social structure of the community. And now we're getting into more housing policy, I mean, if you're, if we're really under stress, then we're going to have to start looking at, at the issues like Susan brought up. Affordable housing, which we don't have much of here unless it's a trailer, um, we really don't have much of a stock for affordable housing.
No.
And people want it.
And they do want it.
They do, and you want the workers who were in the bus, who are going to be in the businesses that are being developed. You want them to be close enough and able to get to their places of business to support the growth in the community. I mean, it's a, it's a very fine ecological dance.
The western communities are, are actually providing that, that housing at this particular time.
Well, they have to because land and housing is so ridiculously expensive in the center of LA, the median price of a house is a million dollars.
Yeah, I was meeting western Maine.
Oh, well, I was going to say, anyway, so they, and the workers, they live two hours out and they have to drive two hours.
We had that, you know.
Each way to get, get to where they're working.
We've had that situation here in Kennebunk, we've had that situation in Bar Harbor, Bar Harbor especially, uh, where they had to. And, you know, frankly speaking, Old Orchard Beach even, even though Old Orchard Beach is plenty of affordable housing, um, um, in terms of rents.
Seasonal lot.
It's all seasonal and and what they do is they import a lot of workers from, from, you know, their countries.
Away.
Yeah, Uk- Ukraine and so forth, um, but workers up down in Bar Harbor area had to drive in from, from very far away.
Right.
It was a real problem and, you know, the cost of doing that and then parking and all that was maybe unattractive. Now, do we have that same problem here? When, when I say the western part, I mean towns like Buxton, Hollis, uh, Waterboro, Waterboro, Waterboro especially, Waterboro's always been, um. In that function of affordable housing, the Lake Arrowhead. And that's, that's where right now you're, you're getting what, two fifty houses out there and they're, they're just little small, three bedroom, uh, three bedroom FMHAs, you know? And they're on, on, on two acre lots, but they're still putting on a little FMHA, it's like eleven hundred square feet, nine hundred square feet in some cases, it's ridiculous. Now, we don't have those, lots there cost fifty thousand, you know, for a two acre lot, fifty or sixty thousand, no, fifty thousand.
Where?
Hollis. While lots here, two acre lots here are eighty to ninety thousand, three acre lots.
Yeah, but you're also closer to the water.
Yeah, and that's the whole point, it, it's soon, the closer you get to the water, the point is that.
The water.
You need housing.
Everything.
Yeah.
Well, I.
But you need housing, but you don't need to.
Personally, I think this area is going to become the most desagrable, I think that's why.
And this is the balance, and this is the tough thing with the balance. And the tough thing with the balance is that we've got a community that wants to retain its character.
I agree, but you've got a run down Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port, you've got markets, you know, all these things are, it's almost, we're almost. Route one where we are is almost right in the middle, accessible from so many different places, so if we just do it right, I think.
But to, to Tom's issue.
So which image?
Un- unless we restrict the number of age related.
Developments.
Developments. And I don't know if we can.
Well, actually, you could, you already restricted the number of.
Building permit.
Built in a year. And actually, I'll tell you a very honest truthful thing, uh, that back, I think it was two thousand seven. Uh, if you remember a gentleman by the name of Dan Hurahan.
Yeah, he wanted to put the golf course into.
Yes.
And he wanted permits for sixty five of model ones right now.
Yep, but they were going to be age restricted.
Yeah, they were.
Age restricted housing out there and you would have had the classic and typical golf course community, here they.
And are those lucrative communities, I mean, do people by and large pay their bills and are good tax based?
Yeah.
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 You can look, give me a perfect example, but there was a condo that they built up on Poota Pack, okay? It was called Wildwood in Cape Elizabeth. And that's right behind the golf course, I mean, uh, uh, and your golfers, they're. Dream of walking out every morning and go hit the ball. It's like having those people who fly all the time, they have a, they buy their house right near the runway. So they can taxi their plane right up to their house, I mean, it is.
Yep, that's true, and in age restricted, the most successful one they have right now is Highlands in Thompson. Brother Wazinski's project.
And what makes it so successful?
On quality, quality of the golf course, accessibility, Thompson is, you know, it's midcoast, but it's, it's right off of two ninety five.
And there's business and restaurants.
Oh, yeah, well, it's Brunswick, you have Brunswick, Thompson, they're across the river from each other.
What's, what's that golf course in Old Orchard?
It's called Doograss, that's not a fifty five and older, Doograss is in no restriction on the, on the age.
But, but I would just say, I would, there's a lot of people who buy houses just to be around the golf course.
Yes, well, it's a golf course community and you, you, you want to be in a golf course community, most of those, not every house in Doograss, for instance, is on a, on a, on a fairway.
Yeah.
Uh, in Highlands, I believe, most of them are. But the simple fact is that that attracts, attracts a certain demographic, many of those people would own the, would own a similar home in Florida. And one of the, the golf course communities down there.
What's, what's.
And they often develop up above the golf course even though they're not on a golf course so that they have the view of the golf course.
Yep.
What's the one in Kennebunk Port? The, 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 the houses are on the golf course.
Cape Rundle?
No, not Cape Rundle.
There's another golf course.
Yes, there is, it's down off Sea Road.
Oh, you're right, yeah, there is.
That's not Kennebunk Port that is.
Oh, it's Kennebunk, I'm sorry.
But there are a lot of houses down there and a lot of where they have bought larger homes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like Port Road and stuff like that.
That, that's also a couple hundred yards from the water.
Right, so you're saying we're sort of between the golf course and the ocean and this, well.
And I, and I will tell you that our, right now, right now, our develop, our, the potential. There, the reason why I bring up the Hurahan thing is because Dan, who was once part of First Atlantic, I think he was, it's still at that time. That was his intent to build a classic golf course community and you can't build one of those and get six or twelve building permits a year. You can't survive doing that. Joe is exempt from the growth ordinance because his houses are seasonal, not year round. Otherwise, Joe would not have been able to survive because he would have gotten maybe six to eight. That would have been it, yeah, he would have taken forever to do it.
That's what Bartlett Farms is on vacation?
Bartlett Farms is limited to, well, right now they're limited to twenty five.
And is that seasonal as well?
No, it's a full time.
And those are going in the fours.
Yeah, yeah.
Four.
Oh, that's right off of Holdoutford Road.
Yeah.
It's across from, um.
Truly.
James, James, Jim's, Jim's Way? Jess Way, that's where.
Like go like if you're going, well, it's.
Oh.
The big open space, you know that big open space?
You don't, you don't really realize it's a development, but you have to drag the way down to get, get to.
It looks like there's this long driveway going down to a house.
Yeah.
Or a field, it's a big field, it's an open field, there's lots of wet, there's, there's wet meadow there.
Yeah.
And then you go around the corner, you go up and then somebody, or less than a half acre, half acre cul-de-sac, and with half acre house.
It's really interesting what's going on in Kennebunk, I'm watching the papers with the price of homes on smaller lots. That say, you know, these are actually developments, but, you know, they're high end developments, but.
The other thing Susan is, okay, in Kennebunk, they have the water, sewer and everything else.
Oh, no, 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 I, I, I get why it is, I just.
But I mean, out here.
I'm watching it and it's just, I find it, you know, really interesting what, how they're pricing the houses.
We can all agree Marty, eventually, all of those utilities are going to be here.
Yes, I totally agree.
Somebody is going to build something someplace and they go.
It's like the seasonal cottages, they.
Like the seasonal, like Kate's butter.
Yeah.
Kate didn't have three phase power and he made arrangements to get it.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're going to, people are going to look at this and they're going to start saying, yes, you know, I want this and I'm.
Well, I'll tell you this, a, a packaged sewer treatment plant that you drop in place is, it's not the expense that's the problem. It's the permanent that's the problem. And right now, our largest water source that we can dump into, that we could discharge into, such a facility could discharge into, is the Kennebunk River. And it's class B right now and I'm not sure it's got the volume that would get a clean water.
All I know is it's coming eventually.
I think, because that's what we were, we've already done that investigation as part of the sewer, you know, the sewer plan that we.
Yeah.
The preliminary sewer plan that Red Pierce has done for us has said it's questionable whether we should do our own sewer treatment plan because of.
Everything.
And then the cost is just astronomical.
So.
Well, anyway.
We need, we need to look at it, should we pull the age restricted out of here?
The bigger question is, I mean, we brought up a lot of issues tonight, um, the bigger question is, should we have unlimited age restricted housing? And is it even feasible to do it for a larger project or do we, do we already have a governor in place with this, uh, with, with our growth ordinance? That would prevent larger age restricted developments from going in? Is that our, is that a benefit to us or is that a deficit to us? I think it's a double edged sword myself, but, um.
Can we legally restrict the amount, the number of over fifty five communities that are built here?
I don't think we can, I don't think we can limit, limit it that way, but what happens is our growth ordinance limits the number of building permits that are issued on an annual basis. Right now it's forty, if you recall, you tried.
Is it all the way up to forty?
Yeah, you guys.
Is that single family as well as multifamily?
Yeah, it's everything.
That, that exempts all the, some of the, the home subdivision, family subdivision.
It's exempted and that's why they do it, that's why it's been popular.
That doesn't, they still have to get a building permit.
No, you're right, they aren't exempted.
They're not exempted, they still have to have a building permit.
My, my mistake.
They can just divide the lot without coming to us, but they want a building permit, they still have to go there.
And they still have to do it. What they, what they don't have is what, what his son is running to, uh, and that is, they have to, you, you want to do a whole section of a street. You want to pull outside of building permits, you can't just apply for some building.
So how many building permits were pulled last year, for instance, do you know, in sixteen?
So, I don't know, but I can find out, that's.
Almost never hit the cap.
We have to.
I think you're going to very soon, like the, on a run down Woods Road, that two acre lot sold pretty quickly.
We did, back when the, the last building boom in the, in the early nineties was, uh, that we, we were hitting that many.
No, yeah, back in, in two thousand four, five, six, we were hitting, yeah, we were hitting up there, yeah. And then in two thousand eight, when the bubble burst, everything fell off the cliff.
And you're trying to reset it, as you recall, you, you folks decided to reset, bring it down.
We, that's what we wanted to do, but the guy shot out.
Voters decided not to, voters wanted to keep it at forty.
Yep.
So, but what that is, is that's a governor on how many units, because you, if you're a developer and I, I, I want to develop a section. And I've got sixty units in there, I can't pull fifty permits just for me and shoe up all of the available permits that are, or the forty permits. There's only a certain percentage you're allowed and there's also a penalty if you, you're from away.
And they don't distinguish between a single family house and a golf course community for the fifty five?
No, and that was the, that was the reason why Dan walked.
Yeah, he was asking for us to consider that as a.
He wanted, yeah.
He wanted to be exempt from that and, and it was, and from a development standpoint, it's, it's, it's a very reasonable thing to do. Because you cannot build that kind of development one unit at a time.
So we stymied that kind of development base, we killed it.
Killed it, absolutely killed it.
Based on the way we, we hand out permits.
And that's where, where I'm thinking, uh, of development like that, uh, I think, I, I think should be allowed. But chomping up the land just to have single family lots is, takes more, more of the land that is, is limited supply of. And, and I think that should be, um, maybe capped, but, um, but not the, like the developments, I, I, I don't think would harm. The town, maybe some of the neighbors, but if there was right along, uh, the golf course, if there were sixty, sixty apartments, I don't have a problem with apartment condo developments.
Well, I, I think, um. That kind of project will change the character of that area, it will, because we'll have traffic load. Uh, if you do fifty five and older, you won't have an, an, an impact on services, you won't have a great impact on services. You'll have some impact on service, but first of all, the kids won't be in school.
No, your impact on, will, will go from being on the school to being on the rescue.
It will be on rescue and you'll have to buy a second rescue and you're going to have to charge and you will charge, but you can make, you can, you can get. It will be on rescue, and you'll have to buy a second rescue, and you're gonna have to charge, and you will charge, but you can make, you can, you can get reimbursement on that if you run a serious rescue.
Well, and, but it's, it's a trade-off, because if you allow the other thing, what happens is, is you dump a lot of people into the, into the town, and a lot of kids into the school system, and, you know, it creates, it creates other problems. I mean, in a way, it's almost better to keep the lots bigger and sell the lots for more money and have more elaborate houses built and a different kind of resident attracted, um, rather than dividing things up into smaller lots and building all these, you know, little subdivisions with, you know, two and, two bedrooms or three bedroom houses, one and a half baths and whatever. These are all kids, I mean, that's what Diane Robbins was talking about. You know, not that I'm ideal, but I'm the resident in a way that you want, simply because I have no children, I pay my school taxes, and I built a, what is considered a more expensive house than normal in the area, and I don't think, I may be an anomaly now, but I don't think I will be in, in the near future.
I, if no one like saying myself, as the only person can afford anything here, and it's gonna save your folks like yourself.
Well, and, and I think.
The character of the town will change. The character of the town will change. Without families, I mean, without a, a broad range of people in a town, it's hard to build a community.
But I think those half acre lots make it, can make it very cookie cutter if you're not careful about who's developing the land.
Does that bring us around then to talking about having this in certain areas and not anywhere across the board?
And design standards too. And it, there, you look, there should be design standards, and you don't wanna cookie cutter. You know, there, one of the, one of the advantages of keeping it multi-family is if it's multi-family, it's usually attached housing for, for fifty-five and older. And that means you have to do a bit more planning, and you, from the standpoint of, I'm gonna put this through tri-unit here, I'm gonna put these four attached over here, and so forth, and you, and you're looking at marketing that as a neighborhood, and your designers are actually designing it with, with a thought of, of how it, how it looks to the, the people who are living there, the feeling of openness, because people are moving to Rundle from down south, or from Portland, or from Benavert, are looking for the feeling of elbow room, the feeling of space, that feeling.
Right, and there is no space, by the way, in the port.
No.
So.
No, there isn't. This is an alternative. But it would be, we would have to have design standards, and we would have to really think hard about demanding more, demanding better than cookie cutter stuff, because that's the only way we're gonna pres, we're gonna preserve the feel of open space around, and it's the only way we're gonna preserve any kind of sense of design in the community, instead of turning it into a lemon town.
So, that brings me back to another thing that I've noticed, that a lot of these, and maybe it's just because you can keep the roads shorter, and it's less expensive, and you have to tell me, I'm really off base on this one, but it seems like the green space is stuck in these weird places, corners, and I think as we, uh, you know, sort of codify what we consider green space and how things should be developed, I was thinking like a village green, the idea that, you know, houses are built around a green, and the green is apparent and visible from the street, and it maintains the character of a small rural New England town, blah, blah, blah. But sometimes you see these developments, and they have to have green space, but you never see the green space. What you see is a short road end, and you see all these houses all around this short road, and they say, well, you have green space.
Nobody can see it.
It's in a marsh, someplace.
It's on the perimeter. It's, it's, it's what I call a keyhole design.
Right, and that's what I was, so maybe we control that better.
It looks like a keyhole. You've got the open space, a little bit of open space around it, and it still looks like suburban development, dense suburban development.
Well, it looks like.
With trees in between each one of them, and it, and it's, is that what we're trying to achieve?
No, that's what I'm thinking that, well, I don't know what I'm thinking. I just, I am not opposed to development by any means, but I just think it has to be thoughtful in, in order to maintain the character of the town and not overload its services, so.
You know, I, I, if I had the resources, I would say, buy each one of you Randall O'Reilly's, uh, World by Design book, his second book, and you go, what the heck's that? Randall O'Reilly was, used to be a planner here. Um, actually, he was a planner with Southern Maine. But Randall kind of made a big splash when I was in grad school, because he, he actually did a book on how to design communities to be rural and still accommodate development, looking at, at design as the solution.
I think it is the solution.
And I've got the book at, up in my office.
Well, I'll buy it. I mean, I'll read it, and.
It's a huge book. But it's, what's funny about it is exactly what Susan was talking about was one of the things. We're in it, by the way. We're in it because of our mandatory cluster development ordinance. But it's funny, because I was working on a section of it the other day, and, and it was a town green, and I think it was in Michigan, of all places, uh, where they, they had very dense development, very dense, they had apartments, and not single-family, but it's townhouses. And they, they, they gave them an incentive to create, to face them against each other, and they're pedestrian green, like a New England green in between the two sections. It's not art.
It's not analogous, but all over London, there are parks in the middle of these, there, it's like a green, and in the middle of all these townhouses and whatever, and not all of them are high rent, but they maintain a green space, a village green. The residents of that particular area have, in this case in London, a lot of them have keys to get in, and their, their children can play, and there's swings, and it's green, and there's trees, and there's benches, and blah, blah, blah.
So, as a variation on a theme.
On Mond Street.
Variation of, on, 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 on the theme of the keyhole development, how about something like a question mark? The central area question mark as the green for all the houses around it.
So developers may balk at that, because they have to build more road, and it makes it more expensive, but tough, because you want it to look a certain way.
Lots are gonna be selling more.
That's right, and you can build a, you can plan the community, so it's a lot nicer looking, and it'll attract people who wanna spend more money, and they wanna live there, and they'll maintain their property.
Actually, I'll tell you, in, in, in Standish, I designed a subdivision in which I needed to get more units in, and, um, I took the classic cul-de-sac, I made it bigger, and elongated it, and at the end of each end of those rows. So what you could do, because you only need sixty-five feet of frontage, I could put all these, all these houses around the end of it, but in the center was this long, like a little green.
Right.
And those were the first, and it, it wasn't elegant like it is in, in London, um, but those were the first units to.
I mean, Central Park in the middle of New York is, is exactly what we're, Madison Square Park downtown, at the bottom of Fifth Avenue. I mean, all of these originally, when these, you know, as these urban areas were developed, and I think we get a chance to control it and keep our character at the same time, but you drive down Ross Road, and there's five little houses clustered here, and then over here, there's a short road with five more little houses, and they all look the same, and they all have the same siding. It's just, you know, is that what you want? I don't think so.
That one's a real design issue.
So I give this a bunch of stuff to play with.
There's a lot of stuff to play with, and, um, it's not limited to age restricted. We're talking about subdivisions in general. We're talking about.
Absolutely.
Because the one thing that we're gonna be facing, for those of you haven't, and you know, we're, we're coming up to those, actually, a lot of, you guys have all been at the, at the, uh, the joint meetings with the, with the conflict. They're pushing for ways in which we can get more open space. And that's why they pushed age restricted housing, congregated care, and all this stuff, because they wanted clustered development. But they really don't care about the design. They haven't thought about, I could design it to make it actually achieve a better, a better product.
Right, and I think the design drives that.
I, I know, I agree.
I, I don't think Donna was correct when she said we were talking about building sidewalks or doing something, because people wanna walk and go out. Well, I've never looked at a Rundle for that, and when you drive towards New Road, if you keep going down Limerick, there's that farm that must have been turned into a development, and it's completely denuded, there's not a single tree.
No trees, yeah.
There's, it's just, and they have sidewalks, and it's all paved, and people, you see them walking and.
She's talking about Clive.
It's like, I wanted to say.
It's three years later, still no trees.
Blah. Who allowed this to happen?
Well, that was the.
Those two boys.
Those two boys.
Those two boys.
And that was the.
And it could have been pretty.
Well, it actually was beautiful land, and it was also the best potato land that we had in the town.
It's, it's beautiful. It could have been really attractive.
But it was easy, because it was already cleared.
Right, because it was a farm, right?
That's what happened.
Okay.
It was agricultural land. It was actually one of the few pieces of statewide significant agricultural source.
But they didn't do anything to make the topography interesting, or to plant it, or, you know, and that's exactly what I'm talking about.
That's exactly what I was talking about, about the only, the only development that is age restricted in town. It, it looks so bad, because they didn't do any designing in it. They just, they just took, dug up everything, unearthed everything, and just put houses right next to each other, and there's no, there's no.
Where is that town?
On Law Cavan Road. On the left-hand side?
No, it's on this way. It's on the right as you're heading toward the port.
On the right. Terry, Terry Old Lane or?
No, you go past Goose Rocks Road.
Yeah.
It's on the opposite, it's, no, it's on the opposite side. It's on the right-hand side, about a quarter of a mile past.
Just past the Trolley Museum.
Yeah, that's the best way to put it. It's on the right-hand side as you go into Kennybunk.
And it's not the killing at all, when you, when you come around the corner, it's like, wah, there it is.
Let my net dry down in there.
So, if I, you know, for me, one of the reasons why I joined the planning board is to do exactly, to try to impose some sense of, you know, order and design to all these developments that are cropping up all over the place that are not thoughtful. And you can, I contend, you can make more money, and not everything has to be luxuriously landscaped and paved, and it, but if you think about it, and you do it in a way that makes it attractive, you'll, you'll net a better result.
The challenge is defining what's attractive, and then selling it, and yet, and pass it to the town meeting.
Well, just a rural, just to give it a rural character. I mean, a village green is something that everybody understands in New England.
And I will tell you, there are towns, um, north of here, that have spent an ord, incredibly obscene amounts of money trying to establish a village green. Scarborough has spent decades trying to do it, and they've never succeeded. Thelmoth just spent, I don't know how much of our money.
So maybe it's some permutation of that. I don't know what it is.
But I'll tell you, Cumberland did it, and you know how they did it? They gave a benefit, they gave a bonus, density bonus, to somebody who made it green. Basically, they made a large circle, and, um, and all the houses were on that circle, and in the center, and it was a lar, it's a large actual bring of open space.
Where is that town?
That's on Tuttle Road. It's, you go down Tuttle Road as if you're going to Thelmoth.
Yeah.
I forget the name of it. I can't believe it. The town, some of the town, uh, facilities are right next to it, but it's, it's very distinct.
There're ball fields there now.
Yeah, they put, they put some ball fields. Yeah. Well, originally, it was just a green, and you'd kinda go, we need something here, you know? But, uh, yeah, that was, that, and that's, and that's dedicated to the community.
So, and maybe.
But there, there's nothing to prevent us from doing that.
We can. It's.
We had that once, when we were doing it on, um, and they were gonna put a ba, a baseball field in and everything else.
Hissong?
Uh, Hissong's.
Yeah.
Okay, and then somehow, uh, they ended up giving the town ten thousand dollars instead, and, uh, it got spent somewhere else, and nothing ever happened.
Yeah, Aaron did that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, so.
We've, we've got some direction to go on multi-family and.
Do we? All over the place.
And, and, well, I mean, fully, fully not the age restricted.
Yeah, we.
And I think, it's, you're right, primarily, it's design standards.
It's more about the design driving the development, no matter what it is, so that the character of the community is maintained.
So we can, we can start working on that, saying, where we want the design standards and what we.
Well, I'll start, I'll, I'll, I'll start pulling stuff from, Randall gave me permission to copy, um, copy sections of the book. I mean, he's got the copyright on it. He said, go ahead. Actually, he sent me the, he sent me the, uh, the PDF file. So I'll start distributing it to you guys. If you wanna look at some of these chapters.
Sure.
And I, and I do that because it's, it's, it's educational, and it's also, he's got, he doesn't take depth, but he just hits a whole bunch of stuff, and, and what it does is it gets your mind going. It gets you excited. I mean, you guys are actually, you review things, but you're also, in a way, each one of you, when we look at what we're looking at every single day, we, at this, at this planning board, in a sense, what you approve, what you encourage, does affect the design of this community. You are designers.
Absolutely.
You are designers, and, and nobody else is gonna do it unless, unless this board starts taking, taking an aggressive approach to saying, we want something better for this town, because we love this town. We want this town to grow in a proper way, instead of ten years or fifteen years from now, go, hey, we blew it. You could have done something.
Okay, so let's, let's move to the next, I'm sorry, this discussion of a, of an essential amendment to the cluster, cluster housing?
Yes.
I don't remember that one.
Oh, I was having fun with that. Uh, yeah, um, this will be like the fourth time we've looked at cluster housing?
In the R one.
Cluster housing in general.
In, yeah, I didn't get that one.
You didn't get it? Oh, okay, well, I didn't hand it out, so that's one.
I got food trucks, all the other bunch of stuff.
As I said at, at the joint meeting, I will be opposed to any, um, any minimizing of, think about cluster development. I think it's so important to the town.
Well, we're written up for it. Let's put it that way. But what I did do, because Donna's going to push this, it's not gonna go away. It's written in the comp plan.
Before we.
There's a lot of things written in the comp plan that doesn't, and.
I think we need to have the discussion about whether or not we wanna change it, and if, if we don't wanna change it, let's not go down that rabbit trail and drive ourselves nuts.
Can I, can I make, can I present what the, what's the comp plan proposed?
Sure, why not?
So you can react to that, and then we'll, we'll have to react at the next meeting, because this is coming up.
This, this isn't coming up for a while.
Well, it's one of the things we were supposed to discuss. We will discuss. You, you're right, it's not gonna necessarily be here, although you'll find that the comp plan committee really wants to look at an alternative to cluster housing, because they don't think it's necessarily always advantageous to open space preservation.
Right, and I've already heard that from Donna.
Yeah. Uh, and, and, you know, there, there is, there is a, uh, there's an argument both ways on that, and, um, the ar, and, and really, I, I don't mind the idea of having large lots. It's basically saying clustered subdivision can be suspended if you do large lots, ten or more acres, do a subdivision of large lots. That sounds like that could work. You know, one house to ten acres, that might, that might preserve a lot of space. But if you go down Thompson Road, you can see houses which have ten acre lots, and they look like they're weeds springing up, because there's no design. There's no thought of how this works, and so they're just kinda scattered out there. And if we do do this, I was thinking, frankly speaking, that we actually start looking at, what are we trying to achieve with these large lots? If you just let somebody put, get ten acres, and they put the house in the middle, and they cut, you know, cut the trees down along the road, and so we're, we're now gonna see all these, these swaths of houses on ten acres, they're no, no different than a large subdivision. Is that accomplishing what we want to accomplish, which is to, to save large, large tracts of land, and, and create that sense of elbow room, or that open space that people love here, that rural feel? They talk about rural feel, rural, rural character is, is mainly visual in this situation. I mean, there's a rural culture here, but the rural character everybody seems to wanna preserve is that feeling of, I'm in an undeveloped community. I can see my fields, I can see the woods. I don't have houses in every single view I've got, and so if we're gonna do this ten acre, it could be a disaster unless we had some design standards.
I totally, well, so when I built my house, the builder and I decided we have a historic lupin field. And he, his lot is contiguous with mine, and we put it in the. And he, his lot is contiguous with mine and we put it in the D that we would maintain this historic lupin field. And you've seen it, what we wrote, and that nothing would be built on it and nothing could be stored on it unless it, it was material being used to maintain the lupin field in a seasonal way. So basically that lupin field in perpetuity is going to be a historic lupin field. Now, that's a big part of my front lot and it's a lot of his lot too that's next to me. But it will remain what it's always been and that's the historic lupin field. And that is what people are, are looking for. You know, the first thing my neighbor across the street said to me, besides the fact that she didn't wanna ever see my house, and I said, you won't, cause I'm gonna put it way back there. But she said, you're not gonna build anything on the lupin field, are you? You're not, you're not gonna put machinery there, are you, or trash cans? And I said, actually, no. So, you know, maybe it's, you know, you talked about incentivizing people to maintain green space and do it in a, you know, a consistent way with a rundle. Maybe you can get people to do it.
Well, that, that's part of the concept of the ten acre lot, you don't have to do, right now, as you know, if you're doing a subdivision, you have to have a clustered subdivision. That's required, if you have six, four more lots, you have to have, it has to be clustered. And so consequently, um, this is the opposite of that because not all clusters always work, not all people want clusters. So this was the alternative, saying, well, it's, we're trying to preserve open space and at the same time give people bigger options, how about if we give them ten acre lots?
And maybe they have to have certain setbacks and maybe they can only clear so much and, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I took a stab at our, on the backside of the page, the stuff in red. That was just a stab to start with. In which, okay, if you wanna waiver from this, and it's, right now only, they're only proposing the rural conservation zone, there might be other places we could do it. I think those sections in the R two you could do this in, but, uh, originally this was only designed for the rural conservation zone. And so you start with ten acres and that you have at least a seventy-five foot setback of trees. If you have a wooded lot, you've gotta maintain seventy-five feet of trees. No clearing, no thinning, no nothing, but you maintain that.
Thinning you might have to, because guess what? Because otherwise if you're undercover, I mean, you get trees overgrow it and you have no undercover, everything will just grow up and then, then you won't have.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, I wouldn't, I'm not saying that something like that wouldn't be appropriate, it would. But the object is keep that big green buffer there, if it's along the road, keep that there.
Right, it needs a visual, right.
We don't wanna see it, we don't wanna see that house behind there, like your situation, only you don't have a big green buffer, you have, you, actually.
We have a lupin field.
You have a lupin field and see, that's something that's probably, in a rundle, open space, you, it's, it's sort of, when you drive along the roads, and let's face it, that's our experience of a rundle. Our, our, our experience of our communities is usually by the way that we, we move through our community. Outside of what we look at out, you know, out our back door or what we look at when we're at, at our recreational facility. Our experience over town is driving along the roads. And it's really important that we have sequences and we have natural sequences where we go from an enclosed canopy. You know, there was only a narrow space and this closed canopy and then, and then suddenly it opens up and we've got this, we've got a small field. Like in your case, we have the lupin field there, that's important, that's it.
It can't just be that and, um, take that, but, but, uh, driving down the road, we don't wanna just have beauty strips like the Alagash River, the wilderness. You go forty feet or, or pass it and it's, and it's clear cut, but it, it feels like it's, it's wilderness. And in a way, that's, that's good for, for most people, but I'm seeing it being a way to preserve the nature, the habitat for, I'm not a hunter, but it's nice to see the deer. And, and, um, I think, and for those who do hunt, to be able to have some game to, to, to go after it. And, and if you, if we just have just a beauty strip and then chew everything else up behind it, then we won't be able to preserve that.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, I was just thinking for this ten acre thing. Instead of cutting it so that you can see up into my house, you keep that, that existing, unless you're, unless you're gonna do something fabulous. I mean, if you wanna cut it and create a field there, you know, and then have your house off, you know, along the, in the corner over there looking down on your field, fabulous, great. But if you have, if, to just cut the front like it is over on Scout's Way, just to cut the front and then just put a big house in right in the middle there. Is that preserving a rural char- is that preserving the open space that everybody wants to preserve?
Not that.
Preserving the character.
A couple of albatites up front that, that don't look, you know, natural at all, but.
Right, that are out, out of character.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's the issue, so if you're gonna, here's the thing, you're giving them, you're, you're incentivizing to say, yeah, you can have ten acre lots, not a problem. You're gonna have a subdivision, you can do a subdivision with ten acre lots. And, and, and you can sell your big giant estate lots, but you're gonna have to do some standards to make sure that you preserve the, 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 the rural character of that area. Or the, any special areas that are in that, that particular area, don't put your house, put your house in a, in a, in a good fold. Nantucket does this, by the way, they, they, in, in fact, you probably see and hear the word deflot, topographic deflot. Out of the moors in Nantucket, they said, hey terrific, you got lots and so forth, but what we wanna do is we'd like to see, you know, site those houses where at least from the road or from public spaces where it's behind, it's, part of it's hidden by a hill. And there's, you know, it's a very enjolating topography out there and, and in a rundle we have some of those too where you, instead of putting it right up front, you put it back and maybe there's a, a rise in there, there's a small little escher in there and, and, and the house is half hidden behind it, you see the roof, but you don't see the house.
Question.
Yeah.
Somewhere along the way in years past, you had a minimum setback for a house.
Right.
Okay, you say there will be additional setbacks, I mean, uh, for something of this nature of.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just as a, a thought, you know, because back in seventy-eight, you didn't have farmer porches and everything else that was common. I mean, uh, uh, you know, everybody was a cape or something other.
Yep.
That was it and you didn't have like these new farmer porches and, you know, around the house and everything else, so.
So is all this, uh, just for, uh, ten acre lots?
Yeah.
So to be sub- subdivided into ten acres?
Yeah, and, and where, where do we get involved in this? Cause it's a subdivision which you're gonna review. So you can, you, you have a chance to actually assign the design standard to say, okay, here's a place, a footprint, you can put the house over here, you can put it the house. You gotta maintain this here, uh, you gotta maintain this, this tree line or if you're gonna, if you wanna develop a field here, fine. But, you know, you, you're gonna have to put the house so it's not sitting in the middle of it, that kind of thing. We would have that design input at that subdivision level.
Yeah, it's like saying, you know, you can't violate the wetlands and you've gotta do this in a way, it's just, you know.
Well, we did that on Thompson Road, where they, where they put the three house, three house lots or anything else with the wetlands and, and there was a certain area where it was no cotton. Huh?
Where near Dubois.
Yeah, where we went.
Oh, yeah, oh, that one, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
And they were cooperative, because they were gonna push theirs way back.
Yes.
So we're talking about a, a property of forty acres or more.
They have, I don't know.
There are actually a lot of, uh, and it's, uh, it's tough land.
And it's sort of trafficked.
Yeah.
You know, the, the point is, in fact, the subdivision that you're gonna be getting, I, I think it's called Oak Ridge, um, that's their name for it so far. It's the old Davis Farm. Let me grab, uh, just before you, just before the tree, the, just before the trees break open and there is Clearview Acres.
Oh, yeah, on the right hand side.
It's on the right hand side.
And that's all been stunk, right? Is that?
No, no, no.
There's a little farm, there's a little farm stand in front.
There's a farm stand out front and then, and then you look up far and there's a white house and there's a barn. And that's, there's a young man who was actually a, an intern of, of Mark Panatz, who bought that and is trying to, you know, do basically community farming up there. Community based farming, um, and, uh, the rest of the, he only bought a portion of the parcel and the rest of it's wooded and it goes all the way to, uh, what's, uh, North Skilns.
North Skilns, South Skilns.
South Skilns, I'm sorry, South Skilns Road, so that big area there, you probably see it.
That's seventy acre lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they have a subdivision going in there. And, uh, the issue there is it's gonna be interesting to see, they're gonna be clustering and doing big lots and it's gonna be interesting to see how that works. Yeah, I haven't really looked at it.
Is it a local developer or is somebody from out of town?
Oh, it's relative, it's, it's a main developer, he did Granite Ridge, it's Walter Woods.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah.
Who bought the big farm on Limerick Road, um, that was, was saying forever.
Swicker.
Oh, the Swicker Farm, yeah, um, uh, outfit out of Tex- a, a couple out of Texas.
And are they gonna live there?
Uh, yeah, they intend to live there part of the year, they have, uh, multiple houses, uh, what they're going to do, they've already gutted the inside.
I was gonna say, there's so. I lived at that property, it was, it needed, yeah.
They're the only ones who are willing to do it, they gutted it completely and they're intent to refinish the entirety inside, refinish the house. They love the barn, they're gonna refinish the barn and then they're gonna decide what they're gonna do then.
Did they buy the whole parcel?
They bought the whole three.
The whole shit and match.
Yeah, and so they're, they're cattle people.
So are they gonna raise cattle there?
They're talking about it.
Interesting.
Yeah, they're talking about cattle, but that's, that's not the long term, I mean, they're, they're playing with all sorts of different things. They were intrigued with the fact that the planning board entertained, uh, a possibility of allowing event center to be, uh, there. But then I told them what happened with, with the neighbors, and the neighbors amounted a, a very effective, um, uh, argument against allowing that particular facility to be, uh, an event center, cause they, what two of the people who were there used to run event centers. So they said, no, not this neighborhood.
Well, it'll be fun to see what they do with it.
It's gonna be fun and, and, and they're very intrigued, they came to one of our meetings, um, uh, at the comp plan, comp plan, the joint meeting. Um, and they, uh, they're very intrigued in what we're going to do here and they wanna see, they like a lot of the stuff we're doing and we're talking about. And they're, they haven't made any strong decisions on what they're gonna do, they may have some cattle, they might cut off a couple of lots, they might try to figure out what kind of venue they can make there. Maybe talk to the planning board until allowing them to do it, and I said, well, there's a little bit more to talk and need to it. But be more than happy for you to participate in comment on the planning board.
Yes, absolutely, I think the no brains you have.
Yep.
For that.
Absolutely.
People don't like to do that though, cause they, they go, I don't wanna go home, I don't wanna spend the next eight weeks of my life sitting in a meeting.
Yeah, right.
Only to have the town meeting shoot it down.
What are we doing?
Okay, so I, this, this looks, this looks pretty good.
I think it's just the beginning, I don't think it's the end.
No, it, it, you're right, it is, it is just the beginning, Marty says, we need to look at, at additional setbacks. But it's, it starts asking some questions about, you know, and it also does that thing that we, we did to Kate that we didn't follow through on.
Yep.
But it starts saying, look, uh, we have important areas in there, we want, we want the development rights. Give it to us, give it to somebody else, put some sort of, 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 uh, some sort of instrument that can't be quashed. Deed restrictions can be quashed in the deed, uh, by lawyers later on. Do something where they can't, whether they, it's given to, you know, uh, Forever Farms or if it's given.
I saw that your, your fifth clause there, uh, criteria, it did be given up the development rights.
Yep, and that's the important thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't, you, you don't wanna give somebody a ten acre, take, ten acre subdivision and then, you know, we're gone, we're, we're no longer here. And, uh, they just start cutting it up and nobody pays attention. I mean, that's exactly the last thing you wanna see happen. This is a contract between a developer and the town and the people who become owners of this property.
The owners.
That this is a contract, we're letting you do something that nobody else can do because you're doing X, Y, and Z, you break your contract.
But presumably you'll get owners that want what you're doing.
That's the, that's the point.
And so.
It's gonna limit the market.
It definitely attracts.
It's, it's gonna limit the market, but it's gonna, it's gonna help to solve the problem of, well, I wanna sell ten acres, I want ten acre, I want a ten acre subdivision. A hundred acres, I want ten houses.
And you can, you can market it though, you know, it limits the market, but it opens the marketing.
Exactly.
And that's all my company, you know, we do a lot of market community, obviously we do marketing, but the thing is, is that you can market those and, and they, they will bring a premium if you do it right.
Where else can you get that?
You can, that's why I'm in a rundle, because I couldn't get it.
And that's, and there's the incentive for the property owner or the developer, saying, we're gonna, we're going to make, in order to get this deal, where you don't have to do these cluster houses. We're gonna give you an opportunity that you can do something special that you can market to a much higher, to a, to a clientele that's willing to pay more for it.
And they'll all join the planning board and be a giant winner.
Or else you can just do it, you can do it the other way, do it either way, it's your choice.
Yeah.
Then, you know, the thing is they always, you know, do carrot, do carrots, we'll let you do this, but this is what we want, this is what we wanna achieve. And if you don't wanna do it, then do it the usual way, it's, it's your choice.
I like it, I think, I think it needs, that's the right direction, poison it.
So would you go over this now or are you gonna look at it and come up with some additional suggestions?
Oh, I'd like to read it then.
Yeah, we need to, to go over.
Read it and, and, and think of some additional.
Chair, what time?
Uh, hopefully soon.
Marty, you're not riveted?
He's not riveted.
The next one was food trucks?
Yeah.
We're gonna look at those.
I thought, I thought the selectmen were running that one.
Well, you know, the, the one little problem is that. Food trucks are, are a lane use that is not on, this isn't on public property, we're on town roads.
It's private property.
It's on private property. Uh, what, what's been happening with food trucks, even in this area here, um, I mean, there's a food truck, there were two food trucks in Chopper's.
Yeah.
World there, for Texas place, which I, you're gonna chance to eat there and check that out. But even Kennebunk still, I mean, Kennebunk's had us, they've been doing it.
The one by the Ace Hardware, aren't there food trucks there?
Yeah.
But now the town, it used to be to, down across the street from, uh, Debbie's Dog was always there.
Yep, Diggy Dog, Diggy Dog, wasn't it? They were, on Route One, Debbie's.
Across the street from the Dairy Queen.
Yeah, wasn't that, Diggy Dog?
Diggy Dog.
Yeah, but it was, it was at one time.
Her name was Debbie. Oh, okay.
It was Debbie's Dog at one time.
You're right.
I used to stop there all the time, I couldn't drive by without getting hung up.
There's a lobster, the, um.
No, that's, that's.
The, the one right here on Ross.
Yeah, and they're gonna lose that, they wanna come here.
Yep.
What do you mean, they're gonna lose it to?
Uh, well, there's supposed to be a couple of farms going in there.
Oh.
What? Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you mean Red, where, where.
Where J.J. Keeney, Keeney is selling every.
They're gonna tear that building down?
Where the cross from you?
Oh, a cross from the Roma Joe's?
Yeah.
See, that is what we don't want.
Yep.
Seriously, it is not what we want.
You should see the look on your face.
That's Kenny Buck though, right?
Yeah, yeah, Keeney's thinking about retiring, but he wasn't sure if it was last year or this year because they wanna buy that old J.J. Keeney.
They're gonna keep the name going?
That's such a cool building.
No.
They're gonna, they're gonna tear the, down the brick, uh, house?
I don't know about the brick house.
And the auction house, they're gonna tear that down too?
Who knows, that's Kenny Buck.
I, I don't know, I, I listen.
Does Combe Farm, Farm, do they actually own it now?
No.
No, they don't, but they have, they have the.
They have an option on it.
They have the option on it and they've got the approval from the, the planning board from what I understand.
It's a great location for that.
Oh, it's wonderful for them, for them, but you're losing a historic structure.
Yeah.
And a historic use that, uh, of value to residents of Kennebunk.
But that's Kenny Buck, right?
Yes.
And they, they're not gonna make them maintain the building?
I, I was kinda shocked.
That's such a shame.
That, that was one of the last, that was one of the last things Judy could have done before she left too.
Right.
Seriously.
Anywhere, can name them stories.
No.
You know what's really interesting is, is I, I read the, uh, the assessment that the economic development folks did of the Route One Quarter in Kennebunk. And I think I gave it to you guys. And I think I gave it to you guys at one point. If you remember when we were doing the uh, when we were doing Route one, when we were doing the DB one district. And one of the things that was really interesting is they said, Kennebunk lost a, a golden opportunity to reframe the typical strip mall.
When they put in Shop and Save, yeah.
Yeah.
I remember that.
They ju- they just consistently blew it all the way through and they had a real opportunity, they had, they had the will and they had the political power and they didn't, they didn't pull the trigger.
Well, let's not blow it. I don't wanna blow it.
So, so back to food trucks.
Yeah, back to food trucks.
So where are they gonna go though?
They, they can go into any of the business districts and none of the residential districts.
Correct, and the question is.
No.
That, no, that's what it, that's what this says.
That's what it says right now.
I know, uh, okay.
But here's the issue, and Marty's, and Marty's probably thinking the same way I'm thinking about it. I think that they sh- can go, we should have exemptions for events.
Agreed.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
Cause you have them already.
Yeah.
You do them turn out like for uh, home days.
Yep, exactly, that's what I was thinking of.
Heritage days. Heritage day, home days.
Heritage days for there.
We, we used to turn on, do it even back when we turned on, did Home Days down at Seashore Trolley Museum. A rundle.
Did you ever think of designating a place for the food trucks to go?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So that they're in a, not to use the word cluster loosely, so that they're clustered together because.
It would be basically a food court.
Court, it's like a food court.
Yeah, go to Wells.
Like Cognizant.
And Cognizant Donuts.
Very popular.
By the way.
It's a, and that way they.
It's expensive.
Oh, I didn't say it was cheap.
Yeah.
No, the food, if it's good, it could be really good.
It is.
Yeah.
And in fact, if you may recall, last year, um, I don't think you were on last year, were you, yes? I know Susan wasn't, but we, remember we uh, I did the, we, we had that meeting with all the restaurateurs.
Right, yeah.
Went around and went to every restaurant and invited them to come and talk about food trucks. To see what the reactions.
Yeah, they were, I was surprised.
And we were surprised. We were surprised because we expected complete opposition.
Oh, there's so many gourmet food trucks right now, they're so.
But this is from existing restaurateurs.
Brick and water.
Brick and water restaurateurs who pay taxes, pay property taxes. Because we're, you know, if, if we were to encourage this, that really hones in on their business. And the question was, would it hone in on your business?
I, why?
And they all said no.
I don't believe.
Well, no, they didn't say that. A Little House of Pizza was adamantly against it.
Yeah.
But a lot of them create their own food trucks.
And I knew, he was, he was, he was.
A lot of the good restaurants, they have their own food trucks.
They did say more co- more competition.
Right, I, I was.
And if you remember Theresa, Theresa and Chris were saying, we'd like to change our, and we have this huge parking lot. And we'd like to uh, we'd like to.
Put a food court in, yeah.
Why do you think all the car dealers are all along one area?
Seven.
You have like fifteen dealerships.
Seven. Well, it's a food court.
It's because it's a car, you know, it's, it's like a food court for cars.
Right. And so, I think.
People wanna shop and they look at everything and they wanna eat different things and they go to the food court.
And I think that, you know, the selectmen giving out licenses to do it is, you know, they have to, it's a, it's a vendor license. They have to, they have to regulate that because they have to show that they have the state vendor license, food production license. But really, it's, it's, it would be us who would encourage things like a food court.
Now, you can have places for them to eat and it can be a common area, trash, you can control that.
It would be us who would say. Exactly. Exactly. Exactly.
But under the ordinance, the way it is right now.
Nope.
They can't.
Nope.
It's one per lot.
Yep, it's one per lot, the way it is right now.
So where would they, where would they, where are the locations that they would work?
First of all, Seafood Center, but Seafood Center is, has been sold.
Again?
Well, I believe it's been sold, I haven't checked to see if the sale went through, but it was, yeah, but Chris and Theresa were selling.
Really?
Where is Seafood Center?
Yeah, I think they were, they were kinda tired.
Right, right down.
They were tired and they weren't getting, they weren't getting.
On Route one?
Yeah.
No, they did not run a restaurant.
You know what, that's exactly right.
Huh?
Oh, good.
Really?
Exactly right.
My son worked it years.
They could kill that.
Right here in the lawn, boys?
Yeah.
What a prime spot, so visible up on the hill.
They used to run your kitchen there.
Oh, I know where it is, across the street, okay.
Across the bed, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
And Dennis.
You'd like Ben who could be on one side, food trucks on the other, could, they could.
It was, it was like uh, Captain Newlick's, it was in South Portland, was it?
Ben's.
Destination.
Dynamic.
He's gonna die.
Yeah, I was really excited about that.
I'm working to the one they own.
Anyway.
That would be a great place for the food, you know, Vandalute might even open their own food truck.
That's an adjustment that they would have to make in here.
And ice cream places are much better.
Cause we're limiting to one, one per lot.
I think we oughta consider changing that.
There was no good reason for having one except for here we had none, so we, we, and we didn't know. That, that was, we probably did that fifteen years ago before it became.
Well, but like, give you an example, okay? Where another good place to turn on was a food court, but turn on, couldn't do it, was uh, down across the street from where the. Where he had his food truck, uh, his uh, cart, but it was across the street where it's all, right next to Mario's.
Oh, yeah.
Right into there.
Charlie's place.
Charlie's.
Yeah.
Well, he bought that property, excuse me, the business? No, 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 I'm thinking the guy that ran the uh, the food truck.
No, he didn't, he didn't buy it.
Oh, okay.
He's just, he's leasing it.
Okay, I thought, for some reason.
I think that was from Jude Saint.
Yeah.
And that's a younger demographic that eats out of a, that is, looks for food trucks for gourmet bites and.
In cities, yes, but I eat out of a food truck. Thank you for calling me a younger demographic.
Well, I eat from that, I get a lot of rolls regularly from that corner.
I appreciate that.
I love it. I, I'm really upset I didn't get the Tex, the Tex-Mex place down here, the Texas uh, you know, and.
The one that found Chopper's Village?
Is it still there?
Still there.
Yeah.
I thought they were closed.
No, it's still there.
Maybe pay for us a.
Oh, he's, he's, he's off on the side as if.
Yeah, no, I know where he is, I know where he is, I just figured he's gone.
No.
No, oh wow. It's, it's.
It's open.
Is it good?
I don't know, I gotta check it out.
He's never open when I go by.
He's never opened when I've been there.
He has hours that are posted, but yeah, I'm just not there at that time.
Okay, well, I'm ready, we need to eat some Chinese food.
So. So this, this looks pretty, my only question, you know, one sandwich, one sandwich board sign meeting, the definition in the land use ordinance may be permitted on the private property. The food truck trailer is located near the entrance within the DB one district only.
Well, that's what's, we're limiting it to the DB one district. Oh.
We're limiting the sandwich sign to the DB one only, nobody else is gonna have a sign.
Well, no, I mean, we're, if you remember when we did this, this was what, a year ago?
Yeah, it's been a while.
Exactly.
No.
Yeah, it was exactly a year ago.
A year and two days, yeah.
Yeah, it was longer than that.
It was.
But if you develop it more towards a food court, then you can change some of those.
Well, we, what we would have to do is allow people to do this in a property unless they wanna do a food court or do multiples.
Well, we could poll them, see if they would be interested in something.
Well, originally we did only one per lot because we were number one concerned that the restaurateurs were gonna go nuts. You know, if we overdid it, they would wanna kill us, you know, and it wouldn't pass. Uh, we learned otherwise, but we, what had happened was we had not included food trailers. If you remember originally, we had approved only food trucks, cause we wanted a self-contained truck that can be moved off the site. That they, they could move off the site, as they do in a lot of cities, Portland does it, where you can't stay there. Now.
But they have, but they have a whole chain of them.
So LA doesn't let you stay there either, you have to move it.
Most places don't.
But most places don't because they're on public property.
That's right, they're parked on the street.
Right.
Parked on the street. And that's why, um, and you know, we're also concerned about trailers, only because we've all been to Freiburg Fair. And the question is, you want that on your street is Freiburg Fair.
Well, so maybe there would be a designated parking truck.
I love that Fisher Chip's guy, but his truck sucks.
What about the prime rib guy, the, the barbecue and uh.
Tex-Mex guy?
That's a trail.
That's a trail.
Yeah.
I mean, the thing would be.
Smoker, you know, you would uh.
Yeah, I mean, the, the question is, what do you want, what do you want it to look like?
Want it to look nice like that one up by Keating's.
Yeah, exactly, and that was the original concept, that's why we said it'd be a truck.
Yeah, that's Mike and Lobster Company.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's originally, and then, then it shifted back to trailers and then we got.
Yeah.
Seahawk.
So we, we can always go back to trucks and make them.
Either that or come up with some design standards for trailers. I mean, I can see where if you're gonna, if you're gonna rent a place and you're gonna keep your vehicle there, which I would assume you will.
Well, maybe trailers have to be moved off-site. They, in an ancillary storage area or parking lot.
Yeah, cause Mike doesn't move that, that food truck off there.
Yes, he does.
He does, every day?
No, no.
Only when he has another.
Only when he has a special event.
When he has a special event, but during his season, he's, he's there.
His peeps event, yeah, he's there all the time.
And he also has a porta potty there and he also has.
I'm sure he has a good place for picnic tables.
Picnic tables and lighting and everything else.
Yeah. I know, that's what we, we, we were very restrictive on that, if you recall, if you read this.
Well, yeah, but we, we had seven o'clock cutoff time, I mean, he has until.
Well, in LA, in front of the county museum on Wilshire Boulevard, there must be thirty of them.
Eleven o'clock at night. I know, but Mike, I'm saying.
Oh, he goes to a lot.
And you get everything.
But he doesn't start usually until eleven.
The only thing you couldn't, you couldn't get in Washington DC was the. Yeah.
Really?
They didn't, they didn't start in early.
Did it have.
We do a breakfast.
At Five Guys or something like that?
I'm sure they would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, might have been.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
All right, moving right along there.
Moving, moving right along, that's. So we have, we have these three different items that we need to look at and we need to make adjustments.
So food trucks is one.
Food trucks, clusters and multifamily with, with age fifty, age fifty-five and over.
Okay.
What do you guys think is a good order to work these out?
Food trucks first.
The easy one first.
That's the easy one first.
No, no, the easy one first.
The reason I'm saying that is because that will be coming up.
In the summer?
I agree with Marty, I think that's a good idea.
I agree, I agree with that.
I think that would work well.
Okay. So food trucks is one, what's next?
The next easiest one is probably the uh.
The cluster.
No.
The multifamily?
Yeah, that's the next easiest one.
Well, if you do multifamily, but then we, that if we eliminate the age restricted out of that, that means if we're gonna keep that, then we have to do the age restricted right around Seals.
Yeah.
They have to be done simultaneously.
That makes sense, but aren't we going to do a, a provision for age restricted that, that is going to be uh. A nice tight cell applicable through a, a specified list of other districts.
Yep.
Right, it's not.
Yeah. Yep.
We could, we could use the same standards as the multifamily for age sixty-five, our age fifty-five would just say it's gonna be allowed in these districts and these are the standards that go along with it.
Yep. Instead of it being anywhere.
Yeah.
Like in two and three, maybe.
Well, let's see, we had, we have one that keeps hanging on in, in two right now, Sassy Pat.
Yep.
But I don't think he's gonna do it.
No, I don't think so either.
At least.
Talked about it for.
He's talked about it for four years now, five years.
Six years.
So was, if we uh, if we were to put these on for discussion on the, on the fourteenth?
I'm not sure you're gonna have time on the fourteenth, folks, fourteenth is gonna be a full house.
It is?
Yeah, you're gonna have five, now you're gonna have six items on the agenda.
With Phil.
With Phil, yeah, the six item agenda.
So the twenty-eighth.
Either that or we have a meeting on the seventh.
We have one already on the, oh no, we don't have one on the seventh, we have one on the, on the thirty-first with the Complain.
We have one on the thirty-first.
With the Compa meeting. And we had, so that we had the seventh off.
Do we get overtime?
You double time them.
We get, we get things.
I couldn't believe I got a paycheck, it was really nice.
Don't spend it all in one place.
Uh, do you get paid, do you get paid for additional meetings?
Yes. Yeah.
I don't know.
You get twenty bucks a meeting.
Including the compa, compa stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, why not? Don't tell, don't tell, oops, I'm on camera.
I could sell my, positive my checking account, I went, oh, that was nice.
Cause they're an ad hoc committee, you're a charter committee, they're an ad hoc committee.
Ah.
Okay, so I have, so do you, do you think we should do, we'll do the food trucks first, then the question is, do we do the multifamily, uh, or the cluster?
Why don't we read, read the material over first, and then, and then we can decide.
Decide on it.
I could, I could start putting together, well, yeah, and I'll start doing some changes to food trucks.
I have one other thing that's not on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Animal husbandry.
Oh, jeez.
Has a, hang on.
Okay.
We think we, we came up with a solution. If you were in that meeting.
I was.
Luke would, kept, kept bringing up the fact that, you know, because of what he does, he has to go to the, to the main Department of Agriculture, and they regulate them and they do everything else. Talking with, talking with CAD, the, the, the idea of allowing the Department of Agriculture to regulate, and whatever it is that they say will apply to any of the farms that we have in Rundle, but to do that, we need a farm overlay district. Unless we wanna develop all of the animal husbandry standards on our own. If we can, if we can look at it and say, here's a farm overlay, and we'll put in some standards for the farm overlay.
You qualify for it.
That, yes, you need to qualify for these standards for the farm overlay district. Put it down, we can put it in specific districts, or we can put it in all districts, and then we simply say, main department bag is.
I like, I liked that a lot, is it, but I, I, I wonder what it.
The R one.
What about someone that we don't know about yet that wants to have some farm animals? We have to make a new overlay district for them?
That works.
Do you have to be in? That, or can we make new, can we expand the district?
What's that, what's that?
What if someone, someone outside of that district, I think, uh, Mark's farm area, that, that certainly shouldn't be in it, or what if someone was down, um, down, um, well, Cabin Road and wasn't near that area, they were outside.
Was it restricted by district? I didn't think it was.
No, the farm, the farm, the farm overlay district would have a minimum acreage, and it would also, uh, I think you, anywhere where agriculture is currently permitted, which is just about an area.
Hmm, certainly two, three, and four, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Four would be without question.
So, it's more about the physical characteristics of the, the, the enterprise than it is where it is.
Right.
Good.
So, maybe to make sure that whatever those, whatever those standards are, that are state-based, that that's gonna fit exactly with the town's, the, 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 the principles of its agricultural preservation desires.
If they're going to be regulated by the Department of Agriculture, you, you would think so, but.
Your hobby, uh, your hobby farmers or your hobby horses or whatever else, that's not gonna be regulated, you know?
But they needed to follow the guidelines of the practices.
But I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Right, and, and that's, that's the key, they, they have to follow what the Department of Agriculture says are the best practices.
Will there be a, a limit to how, how many they can have, a min, a minimum?
That's up to us.
Can they have two animals?
That, that's up to us, what if, you know, do, do we wanna say, do I wanna tell my neighbor who lives next to me who has two pigs and a couple of chickens? Seven chickens, two pigs and seven chickens, do I wanna tell him he's gotta be part of a farm overlay? He doesn't have enough land, I can tell you that right now.
This is commercial.
This is, this is commercial, so we can, we can look at it from a residential point of view, that we wanna get into busting people for having a hobby farm, or, you know?
Well, that's what Donna wants to do.
I don't know.
Well, no, but I'll tell you honestly, that's where, that's where you actually get your greatest nutrient loading problems, is with, with household farms.
And, and unless we go around.
They'll tie up two dogs, or, you know, two, two cows and a, you know, a bunch of chickens or some pigs, right around the wellhead.
Oh, my God, well, those poor people.
Oh, yeah, it happens. You can see it, I could take you a couple towns, a couple places here in, in Rundle, and that's exactly what's happening, you go.
But what Luke talked about, that's why.
You got it, you got it, you gotta be responsible for your own, your own sins, you know?
Yep. But, but you're, you're right, we, we are talking commercial aspects.
There's only one negative I would see to this, and that would be industrial agriculture. Now, if you let me tell Luke that you're an industrial operation.
Yep, and he agrees.
But he isn't really, or an industrial operation is a chicken house, an industrial operation is a hog house, where it's an automated, um, lard, huge, huge.
But it's not regulated by the state of Maine?
Forty thousand chickens or, or twenty, or ten thousand pigs.
Yeah.
Think of it as ten thousand pigs in a residential neighborhood, in a, in a hog farm, and I don't care what they say, you can't control that.
But we, we could.
Can't control the smell.
We, we could look at it and regulate it.
That, that's the question, you know, how, how do we have limits, if we say the state's responsible for it entirely, they've got like two enforcement bodies.
No, no, but we, I think the idea of what Luke was talking about was that we use those as the guidelines. We didn't necessarily bring the state in to regulate it, but that if people wanted to know what the parameters were and how the rules fell into place, they would look to the best practices, um, to be the guidelines, and we would use that language because it's already codified.
Yeah.
And we don't have to create our own language, it's the same language that the state of Maine uses.
You know, but they don't, I'm not sure they would have the same, they, they, we, I'm not sure the state of Maine, the Asians, the state. Yeah, state of Maine agriculture regulates how many pigs you can have on a piece of property, unless it's how, how far you are away from a residential structure. It's always not far enough.
I don't know, uh, but Luke was sort of talking, and I don't know whether or not it applies, that you could use the standards, uh, put forth in best practices to apply to a much larger, um, group of gentlemen farmers and gentlewomen farmers.
Yep.
Uh, than just bigger operations like Luke's butter or Mark's farm, so.
Neither which is really, you know, he's a dairy foreman by nature, because the cows are usually kept and milked and in, inside, and often fed inside the barn. That qualifies as, under federal standards, as an industrial operation, but it ain't the same as a chicken house with forty thousand chickens.
And, and.
The prospect of that happening, though, I think is remote in the extreme.
Well, considering all the chicken houses are vacant around here, yeah?
Yeah, not only that, the price, the, the, that's, that strikes me as a preposterous.
Use of.
Use of land for the price of it, I mean, why not go out and do that and sort of some other.
Thanks, cause we're, too much topography.
But I think it, it helps us if we use language that the state uses, that we use that, you know, and somebody says, well, how'd you come up with that? Well, here's what the state of Maine says. And so, we really qualified that.
We might even poll Luke in to help us with this.
I think it might be just as easy to reference.
Right.
The, the state women, without our having to, we don't need to make the ordinance.
No.
That I think, we can have, we can have a line that says, see main department bag, best practices.
Yeah, well, that was the whole idea.
Yeah.
Right, and that's what Luke was talking about.
The only reason I brought it up was that there might be some, some uses that we wanna limit because of the potential impact.
And we can do that, we, you know, we can say, this, this is what we're looking at, and, and we're, we're telling you, I'm sorry, forty thousand chickens is too many, you can have twelve.
Well, see, you know, remember, it's food free.
We still have a limit.
We're gonna get rid of the stocking ports, I mean.
But we reserve the right to review. You reserve the right to review, it's all conditional.
We have to step to standards.
That's sort of what Tom was saying, you know, it's, it's conditional, you, you reserve the right to review what somebody's doing, and, you know, if you think it's, you know, over the top, or, uh, you know, pushing the envelope, or abusing the rules, you know, you can limit that.
Well, it sounds like I should, that's the mothballs off the farm overlay district. See if I can.
It might be a way out.
I think so, cause we, look how long it took us to go through home occupations.
We're not done either.
We're, we're not completely done, but we've.
We're not done.
For, for, well, no, no, I'm just talking about just for the R one, we've made some pretty good progress on home occupations in terms of what's going on.
You think so?
Yeah, I think we, I think we've made a great deal of progress.
I'm not feeling good about it.
Until they decided, well, no.
Well, and then we're gonna do them all over again, that, that's, that's the thing that kicked me in the, in the stomach.
But I thought that up, up to that point.
All over again.
I think we've made some progress with that.
I thought so.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we had made progress, and my, my point being, look how long it took us to get to this point with home occupations. If we take on animal husbandry, we can come back next year, we'll still be working on it.
Agreed.
Um, so, well, we'll, I guess we'll pose that, are you gonna pose that on the thirty-first?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Make it a lot easier to sell that time meeting. Since, since everybody was at that meeting, so, we'll be talking about that a little bit here. I mean, the first order of business was I was supposed to come up with a list.
Yes.
Which is like fifteen, not even, no, excuse me, it's like ten that I know of.
Yep.
That's it. And then, uh, then there's the, and then there's the ones I don't know of.
Well, you can leave your list open and.
Oh, it is open.
So.
But then, then I thought the next task was we were supposed to go over permitted and conditional uses again.
Not the permitted, the conditional, not the permitted, cause we're, cause we're looking at, we're looking at type two for conditional use in the R one district. That's what they, that's what they wanna.
I thought they wanna look at other uses beside, other non-residential uses in that district.
Oh, I didn't get that.
No, I got that feeling. I don't know, we'll find out when the minutes come out.
Okay.
It, it was a list of the conditional uses, uh, we needed a list of what's going on now, and then we're gonna look at the conditional uses, cause they wanna make the type two applicable to the R one, cause I started the whole thing up, I thought we had said, no, it was gonna be type one in the R one, and that was it, and then they all, everybody jumped in and went, no, no, that's not what we said, we said we want type two in there as well, and we just have to define what they are, which was completely different than what I thought we were going to.
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought type two was getting into the serious home occupations.
Yeah, in something other than the R one.
Well, I don't think we're gonna avoid having it, I think we're gonna have three types, frankly, in the end, when you look at it, because the intensity of, of uses that you, of home occupations that you might have in, in a different district can be more intense than the, in the R one. Just think that, that's the case. But, I don't, we'll see, all right? So, we'll talk about it, that'll go on the agenda. Um, you look like you're about something to sign here.
Yeah.
Um, other news?
Other business.
Uh, one, I got your, your note concerning the, uh, the sidewalks.
Yeah.
We only have one.
Yeah, we have the one.
That leaves the one on at nine thirty, any prospect of, uh, shifting that, uh, or to earlier in the, in the morning? How do we got the eight thirty one?
No, no, the nine thirty one is happening, the nine thirty one is not.
Oh, is that how it is?
We're not going to Joanne's, we're going to Rontus at eight thirty.
On Limerick Road.
Yep.
Not going to Joanne's, okay, not, okay.
I had to do the other way around then.
That was the late one, yeah.
It's a rental business park, uh, she, she withdrew her application.
The daycare one withdrew.
Application.
So, which one?
We're going to, next to, next to the town hall.
Yeah, the, the dog, the dog.
One who.
She's gonna need better fencing, that fencing is really problematic.
Well, that's something.
Not that I.
That you guys should talk about.
That is actually something I do know about.
Well, uh, firstly, the, what she was talking about, fenced area was not existing there was more as a, like a.
Just the milar.
What she had.
We don't have to sign a paper.
No.
Yes.
You sign your paper.
Balden's?
Only where there's a signature.
Show the plateaus, you're there, are you gonna come on?
Yeah. But I'm using forehead, and turned out she had a fenced in area for the run.
But you can see that fenced in area that's a play yard right now, and that is really, doesn't qualify as a, um, what I would call a safe fenced in area for dogs that are not shots.
I agree with Luke.
Yeah, I think you wanna look at that one, also, Tom, by the way, it's in your packets, you know, I, I made a mistake of giving you, uh, I'm gonna go and see the comments from, uh, Lynn Howe, I don't know how I mixed up those two, but it's in your packets, her application.
Lynn Howe.
The stuff that was in your packet last time, on the January tenth meeting, was not her application, I, the one thing in.
Oh, yes, I remember that.
And, and so, her application is in the packets I just gave, you wanna look at, pull them out for.
Do we have to sign in blue, I mean, in black, is that?
Use, well, not, the milar, it's gotta be permanent, it's gotta be.
So, is that pen that you have there permanent?
The right pen?
Yep, that's the right pen.
Okay.
I got a better one here, too.
The one that was in the last package is, well, if you read it, you'd notice it has absolutely nothing to do with.
Yeah, it was wrong.
Okay, so, I'm gonna, I was wondering.
Yeah, it has absolutely nothing to do with it. It was Lynn Howe actually talking about conditional uses, and actually talking about whether that, um, residential uses and, and what, what. She was discussing home occupations, and also, and, uh, R four was a, a mixed use district, she disputed that was a mixed use district. So, that's, that's what, that's.
What's gonna happen to those people on Riverlands that have all those limos and taxis parked there? Did they get any?
That's been pursued, but, before you go to, before you go to court, you gotta make sure that you got everything.
Oh.
You got everything covered.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, there's still some investigation going on as to what, what, what the fleet is, where they are.
Investigation by whom?
By the code enforcement office.
You know, I think they, I mean, I got kind of a fallback when I suggested do somebody their own investigation, but I, you know, it's not that big a deal.
If they do half of what they did, um, in Chickadee lane, they.
Yeah, it's, you, you, it's not hard to do, you take both. This thing.
What?
Yes.
Is this the page?
Yes.
I'm having, uh, vertical hold issues, how many pages are we signing?
A lot.
Okay, so, I, you know, threw the bell and it's.
What's, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, I thought we were gonna have, um, Old Post Road.
Do I have to date it?
No, Old Post Road, uh, well, Cabin Road, back.
No, it, it, it turns out, uh, you're talking about the Scout Way project?
Yes.
No, it turns out that there was, he didn't need to do what we thought he had to do, the, in terms of the permit, said something different.
You already got these signed?
I did.
Oh, great, thanks. It is, and before you go to go on, before you get a C, which you would do anyways. And the well, and the wellhead, uh, the state got involved in the wellhead issue, and Mark Hampton, uh, re-signed it, so, uh, the well was closed before they put the septic system, they didn't put the septic system on the well.
Oh, my.
So, it was gone.
What's gonna happen with the guy who's throwing the chicken manure all over?
That's a civil issue.
That's a civil issue, cause there's nothing, yeah, there's nothing really we can do about it.
Really?
No.
That's another one, just collect the evidence in this.
Oh, I totally put, since two thousand and eleven, it's been going on?[1719.48]